Okay, guys, it's five o'clock. We'll get started here. Okay, everyone, welcome to our meeting today, the seventh day of October twenty twenty five. Committee of the whole meeting. Before we get started, the town of Carson would like to acknowledge that we are located on traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. And we do have an agenda to adopt. Are there any additions to this from anyone? Counselor Court?
I'll make a motion about the agenda for the committee of the whole held the seventh day of October twenty twenty five.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you. We have one delegation today. Gene Bayme will be here to chat with us. And if you want to come up to the lectern and let us know what's going on and we'll have some questions if needed after.
Thank you. In two thousand and twenty one, I purchased ten acres on the bypass road. It was owned by the Stewarts and at the time Kay Olson had some horses there. And he obtained water for his horses from the town. And I saw that there were two pipes sticking up in the corner there and I thought I wonder if that's town water and came in and approached the town and they said, yes, it's there, but it's never been paid for. So if you want it, you got to pay for it. And I talked to Nolan and he said he could put in a farm hydrant. But if if it was a metered farm hydrant, it would be less expensive than if it was not metered. And Jeff tells me you can't have a farm hydrant that's not metered, but I see them in that part of town. Some people don't have a metered hydrant and I don't know what their arrangement is, but there are others around. Anyway, I I thought that I would let him go ahead and put the meter on it. At the time I purchased the land, the NMAX bill was eighteen dollars a month, just I suppose for the power that was was there. And sometime later I noticed, and it's an automatic payment, so I don't see the bill, I just see the amount. Sometime later I noticed the bill was between eighty and a hundred dollars and I thought, that's not very much. I wonder if they're reading the meter. So I came into the town office and and asked there and and the person I talked to said he would take care of it. And I went back and and through the months ahead, the bill didn't change. So I thought, well, water must not be very expensive. And I'd had a previous arrangement for Anderson's property and the and the water was twenty dollars per acre per year. So I thought, well, must not be very expensive to have water in Carson, which I was sadly mistaken. And this year I got a bill for seven thousand and six hundred dollars. So they were, I was buying a thousand dollars worth of water a month and not realizing it because it wasn't being billed. So I I I had gone in and and alerted the town that maybe it wasn't being read. So I I assumed the town might have some, accept some responsibility for my dilemma. I don't know if you will or not, but my hope is that you will. And the other thing is that I'm told that there's also supposed to be a a wastewater bill and a garbage bill. But it's a non-resident area. It's never been garbage picked up there. And the wastewater does not go into the sewer system. So I'm hoping that those two items will be waived. I am prepared to pay the fee for the water. I used it, but I didn't know that it was going to be a thousand dollars a month. So that's my presentation and I admit your mercy.
Thank you, Gene, for presenting. And we have a few questions, Counselor Burton and then Counselor Granger for you.
When you went into the town to tell them that you thought maybe there was a billing problem, do you know when that was approximately?
They installed that in twenty thousand, twenty thousand and twenty two. So I think it was the next the next spring. I'm not sure. I don't remember for sure.
I'm in twenty three, probably. Is that your best?
Twenty twenty two, I went in there. I think I'm not sure.
But you're saying you went in probably the next year. Is that what you're saying? So sometime in twenty twenty three.
I think so, but I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Granger?
Yeah, thank you, Gene, for showing up and explaining this to us. So my questions are, if if the meter had have been read, you would have, and and that who reflected in your bill back in twenty twenty two.
I wouldn't have watered the pasture.
Right, you would you would have immediately realized that you're better off at the flat rate.
Sure.
Right?
Sure.
And so I guess if, I'm thinking one of the questions we have to answer is, like, you're willing to pay for the water you use. It's just, under the circumstances, what is the fairest way to to charge you for that water? And I think one of the questions we, you know, it's going to be different than than the metered rate is, you know, we as a council, can we find it in ourselves to suggest that that you you pay for the water, but at a more reasonable rate that you're telling us if you had have known, that's what you would have switched to and you would have been more careful.
Well, had I known how expensive that was, I would have had a non-metered hydrant. But maybe that's not fair because I used a lot of water to to water that two acres there.
There is a little bit of maybe misunderstanding about when the town has a meter and when the town does not perform meter. Normally, if you have a property, you should have a meter because that is, am I wrong with that notion?
Counselor Granger, can you hear my mic up first?
No, I just I just asking, normally we have a bylaw that says that you have metered a meter and you pay meter water, right? So that option could not be exercised, no matter what that you're presenting.
Well, I know that there are other hydrants that are not metered in that area.
And I'm glad you had you you are letting us know.
There's people that I've been associating with and with my horse hobby and and Doug Doug Sheen had cows on that area. That were being watered by his hydrant. And I know there's no no meter there.
Okay, Counselor Granger and then Counselor Court.
So is Jeff, is there not a flat rate? I heard a figure of a hundred and thirty dollars a month for a property like his. It's not non-residential. Is that true?
Not really, but you can answer the question and then we're going to just, if there's anything else about the presentation, we usually discuss in our next meeting as a council of the what's going on and then administration will get back to you, but you can answer this and we'll move along here.
Very short, there is a flat rate for, have any non-metered properties? Or they were transitioned. But the reason why we don't do non-metered is have an example of someone maybe using hundreds of thousands of liters a month. It doesn't make any sense to have property that needs to be metered. So, no, we do not just intentionally set someone up with a non-metered property.
Counselor Court?
Just for my own information, kind of dealing with this, is there not a raw water line out there right around that area somewhere? Or is there?
Is there?
At the junior high, okay, that's raw water there. Okay.
Okay, is there anything else from council on this? Thank you, Gene, for coming. We'll discuss this most likely at our next meeting, which is a week from today, and then administration will be in touch.
Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, we have a adoption of minutes from September second. Mayor?
I moved to adopt the minute of September the second, twenty twenty five.
There any questions, concerns, anybody has? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Moving to our bylaw policy, draft bylaw policy F twenty dash eighteen, fees and charges, Jeff.
So you have in there counsel for some consideration, a number of amendments to fees and charges policy that was largely there's the preamble has been changed a lot. And then after that, it's some smaller changes in the schedule around reservation deposits and also around rentals on things like a stat holiday. So if there's any questions about any of those specifically, happy to speak to that.
Counselor Burton?
Jeff, I noticed paragraph five of that Schedule A is the campground fees, and I know that we contract that out. So we're introducing what it looks like is is are we introducing a fee to like a reservation deposit for camps, a campsite? Did you discuss that with our contractor?
Joshua's defer there.
And he, what were his comments? Does he find this?
They wanted that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, anything else on this, anybody?
So, yeah, if there's no other comments, we'll bring it back prepared for adoption at a future meeting.
We can make one of the comment, last page.
Yes.
Where it's, so the very bottom, it says cancellation fees. Cancellation fees shall be charged on all cancellations made within seventy two hours of reservation. I wonder if we could just word that clear because reservation could mean when they make the reservation, it could mean the date they reserved. And I think this is the date they reserved. Anyway, we might want to just tweak that a little bit to make it clear. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm going on to five B. The parades and demonstrations by law, Josh is going to speak to this.
Yeah, so the report in your package is just an update on our progress on standards relates to parades, demonstrations and public events so far. So our initial investigation is showing that the RCMP may have a role here. And we certainly want to make sure that we're in step with what they're doing. So getting a new permitting process together and also amending what we have in the traffic safety bylaw already that relates to parades and processions only. It just seems like it's going to extend past this council term, but we will continue to work on it.
That's all right, Counselor Burton.
So I I'm fine with that. I think those are all good points. And I think I think two things. One, I think we do want to do this. Like, two, we want to do it right. So. But I just hope that the next council keeps in mind working on this because I just look around at some of the things that have gone wrong in other communities. And I think it'd be prudent for us to do all we can in this regard, so.
Okay. Anything else on this from anybody? All right, moving along here, five C, the Council of America, re, I can't even say the word.
Remuneration?
Yep, there we go.
We need to change that. That one trips everybody.
Yeah, there is.
Take it compensation.
Remuneration.
Let's make that one of the changes.
What is it, remuner?
Remuneration.
Why, why did we think it was remuneration?
Well, if I count you, I've remunerated you. But if I pay you, I've remunerated.
Okay, there we go.
Who knows why? Yeah.
Muni.
You didn't teach us this in school.
No. The the root, the root. The root in there is in the mune.
Money.
It's money.
There we go. Uh, Josh, I believe is talking about this as well.
Sure. So there's a bit there for you, but to just summarize it, it's presented in three parts. So there's the draft policy and then as an attachment to that is a notes document that tracks all the amendments through the current policy. So you can just see where everything is moving. And then the analysis document is where I imagine we spend most of the time tonight. So the analysis, there's three options in there for a new reservation formula. So each of them meets council's goals as we've understood them to this point. So compensation increases should be participation based. Travel for meetings should be fairly compensated. Total remuneration should be increased by fifteen percent and non-cash incentives should be included. So option A increases long and short committee meeting rate plus the base rate. Option B adds a new rate, which would be applied to meetings attended outside of Cardston. And option C is essentially option B plus an increase to council meeting rate. So all different kinds of ways to do it, but.
Counselor Burton?
So in in option C, and and the reason I, part of my, when this was photocopied, it shoved the words over it. I'm missing part of every page, but. So I apologize if I shouldn't know the answer, but well, I think you could just answer the question. So based, if if we were to go with option C, where the rate for committee meetings, the rate for uh, these meetings, uh, there's a a rate recognizes travel. In the aggregate, have we approached that fifteen percent compared to like a projected, and I know everybody's different, but projected roughly fifteen percent over what we were at?
Yeah, for sure.
Well, this one, that's a most.
If I could add just a little bit, so.
From what I can see.
When we took average, and I say we, Joshua did almost all of this, but when Joshua looked at this and we looked at the number of meetings you attended over the term, time spent, so option A and option, option A, B and C, this, because it's not precise, but the spread is about two hundred dollars between the three options. So it all, they all meet roughly the fifteen percent. It's a very tiny spread between the three options.
Anything else on this? Mayor?
I ju- I just would say if we can manage whichever solution this council wants to go around that fifteen percent, I think we will have done well for a refreshing of that policy. It needs to be refreshed.
Counselor Court?
This is a couple of thoughts. I've talked to a couple of communities now and they they generally pay per committee meeting instead of giving an honorary, like we've done in the past. And that way, if you're not there, you don't get paid. In the past, we've had an honorary, but if you're not there, you probably got paid anyhow. So I just wonder if we thought about that at all, if we want to go to a, you pay for your committee meetings?
I think we had talked about it, but the problem we were, who's vouching for you or who's?
Yeah.
I know we have minutes, but yeah, I I agree, but I just, yeah, Jeff?
If if you wanted to go that way, counselor, and that's certainly an appropriate way, we would rely administratively on you to submit a requisition for every meeting, which may be fine. You know, you may just have to sit down at the end of every month and and do all that because otherwise we're searching for minutes and trying to figure out if you went to Clarus Home and if you went to the Chief Mountain and it can be done, don't get me wrong, but I I would prefer if you want to do that, put the onus on you to submit.
Counselor Burton, Counselor Jensen?
So I had raised that issue at our last meeting. So in in option C, there's still no direct, because I had raised the issue of me going to the horse meetings and back and it didn't make any difference whether I went or I didn't go. My pay stayed the same. So it almost creates a disincentive, if you will. Does option C not address that or did I misunderstand?
I believe it does. I had intended that all three would do that. So in either option, if someone was to stay just in Cardston, um, they wouldn't receive that additional travel bonus that would be applied to somebody.
Okay.
I I kind of like option C from what I'm understanding.
Counselor Jensen?
I don't know if you want to address it or not, but uh, over the last four years, occasionally I would have a conflict between a committee meeting and a council meeting. And I always chose council over any committee meeting. But then according to this, you kind of get binged if you don't attend the committee meeting, which in some ways is not really fair. You know, to me, I didn't really care because I'm not here for the money, but you know, someone else might be, you know. But I, you know, there was just those, you know, you know, Chinook Arch and Souths Grove, you know, and sometimes their meetings would conflict with something what was happening in the town or, you know, especially Heritage Week and sometimes a town council meeting, especially around Christmas time.
Counselor Granger?
Yeah, just in response to that, I, when I first got on council, I had a couple of conflicts like that and I I sorted it out with the the chair of the who was running board or the the committee to try and get their meetings not on Tuesdays. And I was successful that way.
Yeah, well, sometimes with big places like Chinook Arch and Souths Grove, they don't, they don't count.
Uh, Counselor Court, Counselor Burton?
Two questions. Um, I think Raymond's actually obsessed with their new council trying to go Monday nights. They had their first meeting last night on a Monday because of conflicts on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. That's just a thought there. And can you tell me what it means when you see a travel per diem a hundred dollars? What exactly are you talking about there?
So the way your current policy works is if you, everybody gets paid for one committee meeting in their monthly payment, that's assumed. Anything beyond that, you would claim either a long committee meeting rate or a short? And your travel is included in that. It's assumed in that whole payment. Option B and C here created a separate rate that says if you're traveling, tack on a per diem. And that's what that language is used for.
So are you suggesting then we do not put in for gas if we're traveling?
That's included. No, not included. You would claim that as well.
Yeah, it's your comment that that driving times.
Driving time and more than gas, okay.
Counselor Jensen, some of my meetings are.
Okay, and that was that was another thing too, because with Souths Grove, you you could be anywhere. Um, you know, Clarus Home, Last Bridge Cave or any, you know, Milk River, anywhere. And so, you know, I I didn't, you know, it takes my time, travel time, you know, an hour one way to get to wherever. So, you know, do you want to be compensated for that or not?
Mayor?
There is, if you go under three guidelines, under number three A, one, I'm trying to understand exactly what that refers to. It says when incurred for the purposes of attending authorized committee meetings or parades, the following expenses are eligible for reimbursement. Mileage in excess of fifteen kilometers one way. Why one way?
That's just lifted rate from your current policy. So that's.
It has to be changed.
But she's asking, why is it like that?
Yeah, if I'm, I'll take a stab at it. I think I remember this, but maybe not. I actually think that's the discussion at the time. Boy, I'm having to think way back. I believe that that was
Going to conference.
No, no, no. It was saying your committee pay is included in your your monthly check. And so you, if you have to drive to Spring Cooley to the transfer station for a solid waste, you're not charging mileage for that because it's less than fifteen kilometers.
Correct.
I, they were trying to kind of say, okay, everything in town plus Spring Cooley, that's all included and you don't get to claim for that. I'm quite sure that's where that number came from. It was grabbing the the landfill.
But our new one says in town versus out of town, right?
Right.
Okay, all right. So so if you, if I can carry on, there was some discussion at one point when we used to go to Calgary or to Edmonton. And if we were staying because we had family business or something like that, then I would say it is fair to claim one way and not two ways. And that should be written somewhere. But it's not because that can become a few hundred dollars uh, for travel is quite a bit of money.
Anything else?
What are you saying?
I'm saying, imagine I go to Edmonton
Yeah.
for a conference. But imagine instead of coming back right away home, I want to stay because I'm going to go visit my family. Should you really at that point charge a town for the return because you were going to visit them? And you're just putting the two together?
You make the trip, you make the trip. Otherwise it gets too nuanced and I'm subjectively judging your nuances. I don't want to do that.
Okay. Oh, fair enough. I'm trying to understand what is a fair shot at it.
Counselor Brown?
But to be clear, those of us have done that though, because, I mean, we have, like, I've gone up to Edmonton. I a couple of years ago, no, I think it was a year ago, went up to Edmonton, drove up with y'all and then hopped on a plane and went to Vancouver with my husband. And I did not claim the coming back home. I claimed going up and then I magically got home.
That makes sense.
Do you know what I mean? Like, so we aren't doing it. And we've had other counselors that have, we all go up together and then Counselor Joe Blow stays with his kids for another week and he doesn't charge that coming home. So we are doing it, whether it's. we are doing it, whether it's written or not. That is something that we're doing. You're right.
And, and no, you are doing it, but.
Agreed. I'd like to see it written.
And you counsel, you're not knows those nuances.
I understand.
Counselor Court?
If I'm going to Edmonton and I spend three extra days with my family, then they come home. I wasn't going to Edmonton originally to see my family. So you should be able to charge both ways.
What the heck?
I think so. In that situation, I'd like if I stopped to see my sister in Oketok on the way home. The only reason I'm stopping in is I was going by. I was going by because of town business.
Yeah.
Is there anything else on this from council? Uh, my only question was, we were talking about, um, I had brought it up, I think Counselor Brown brought it up about, um, call it perks or whatever you want. Like perk, like.
Yes, there is something there. That's a twenty-four certificate.
Did I miss, did I miss it?
Yeah. Under three, three, five, two, three, five, eight, two.
You don't need to answer my question. I'll read it tonight and we'll talk about it next week.
Sure. So, do you want direction? Like, can we do a little straw? Because we, they need to, we only have one meeting left. They need to know what to bring back.
We want something to, how you want us to tidy this up?
Yeah.
Joshua, one thing, all the committees, some are quarterly meetings as well, like the Orsk Gladbridge meeting is a quarterly. Well, depends how, you could go every month. But they kind of have ones that are quarterly that are bigger meetings. And then they'll have smaller meetings that you could go to if you wanted to, but you don't generally go. I don't know.
Well, if, if I might, um, if you wanted it to be kind of a more consistent increase for everybody, you would put it on the council meeting rate. If you want it to be heavier on those that are traveling and recognizing that, that'd be heavy on B. Um, and then A is also committee meeting. So I don't know if that answered your question.
I was just saying that I suspect some meetings might not be monthly. Like may, I'm just saying maybe there are groups out there where you don't meet monthly.
You have some that are, yeah, once a year. So that might be an argument I'd make, putting it so heavily on meeting attendance.
Necessarily. They go to last meetings. They just put in for one meeting.
Five C's.
Yeah, so I, for me, the, the compensation should be on our committee meetings. If I go to a meeting, I get compensated. If I don't go, I don't. So if I go once a year, I get compensated for going once a year. But, you know, I wouldn't take the same as somebody who went twelve times a year.
No, certainly not. But just that way, you're falling short of fifteen percent. But it's based on just on your district. It'd be available for those that are.
I was just gonna ask, it's not in that, the, what we're talking about, it's not in here?
No.
Like the, the passes and perks and stuff.
Five C isn't in here. And in there, it's completely cut off.
Like, I haven't seen it. That's why I asked about it.
In the first document, the draft policy? From page, your fourth page in this.
So it's just one bullet?
Yeah.
By A two. Okay.
We got to determine if that's the right number.
At the end of the day, council, like, if it's a bait, like, I was talking to Jeff, I was like, if we need use of the facility to take somebody, if we need something like, it's just talking to Jeff and like, it's not a big deal if we want to bring another counselor to come to the golf course with us to show them around or bring some one to show them or a swimming pool. Like, I think it's just a discussion with Jeff at that moment, if there's any issues, but.
So the, the way, do you see that?
I do. So the way it's written is it says benefit. Do you want me to read it? Because I didn't.
Can you help me find it?
It's not in there.
Well, it's five, yeah. Let me just read it, counselor. Under benefits, it says, um, twenty-four certificates granting one day's free admittance to any municipal recreation facility. So essentially, as a counselor, um, we would be able to, so right now, we, we don't, we don't get any freebies. We don't get free at the pool, at the ice arena, anywhere. Um, but it's saying we would get up to twenty-four to wherever is.
Is that per year or per the term?
So great question. It, it doesn't stipulate that. It just says twenty-four certificate, certificates granted, one day's fee admission to any municipal recreation facilities. So you're right, counselor, it doesn't, it, that's all it says.
So we're allowed to give those away to people in the community?
Or keep them yourself. You get twenty-four passes to the pool.
Does it say in A at the commencement of their term?
It does.
Okay, so when you are elected, twenty-four is yours.
For the term.
Yeah, for the term, for.
That could be higher or lower, of course. But it was kind of like, is it one a month? Is it two a month? Is it one every two months? So that's where we started.
No, that's fair. Thank you. I, this wasn't in there, so I.
Oh, sorry.
So that's for the term.
Counselor Burton?
I think so.
So before yours.
Do we, Josh, do we give? Sorry, man. Do we, do we give our town employees any kind of reduction on use of the facilities?
Uh, we have, we have a golf corporate pass they can use. They don't pay for golf.
With the swimming pool, they would, kind of thing.
Yep. I just feel a little uncomfortable getting anything like this for counselors. It's just not. I don't want, I don't want that perception that I'm getting something for free, so.
Anything else? Yep.
We don't have a real great comfort level either, so I agree with Counselor Court. That might be just going a little beyond.
Okay, everyone have a look at this and we'll obviously come back to our next meeting. We can make a decision. Counselor Jensen?
Okay, so, but I know when I was on the library board, I got a free library pass because I was on the board. And so, but I never used it because I prefer to purchase my own books. But anyway, the, you know, I didn't see anything wrong when I was offered it. I didn't refuse it. I just, I was surprised.
Just to add to that, when I was on the Ag Society and still on Historic Society, I paid for my own memberships every year.
Okay, we will discuss this next week, I'm sure.
I might, Mr. Chair, their preference or?
You need to.
I, I know Counselor Burton's preference. He's, he's stated option C. But we would like to narrow that down, but we're going to bring you three different ones to, you know, to consider.
So.
Go around the table.
Um, Joshua, because things are cut off there, help me recap what you're saying. You're saying that option A is more weight on the per diem?
Committee meetings. No, A was more weighed on. Which are called per diems.
Per diems, right? Option C, what is the difference?
Option C is increased to council meeting rate and an addition of a travel rate.
Okay, personally, I prefer option C.
So, so in C, there's no, you're not paid, your attendance at a committee meeting is not tied to your compensation other than the travel time?
Right.
Because I thought you said that it was. My, maybe I misheard you.
Say that again, sorry?
So in option C, we've got, we're paid for regular council meetings. And then are we paid separately for attending a council meeting? Because I had understood you to say yes.
So I, I'm sorry for the confusion. When I say option A is this, B is this, I'm, see, I'm only talking about the additions or changes. Everything else stays the same. So you are paid your base rate, which includes one committee meeting attendance. You're paid for short and long meetings, if you're having any. And then A, B, or C is just whatever changes to that formula.
But does option C, so, so the way it is right now, I'm just paid monthly to attend meetings, but my attendance at the meeting doesn't determine my compensation.
Yes, this meeting, yes, but your committee.
Right now?
On this.
You're paid for committee meetings, you attend, yeah?
No, but if I don't attend one, my pay isn't reduced.
Except for one. And one is assumed every month.
Right, that's what I mean. That's what I mean.
But you only have one month, yes.
So, so let's say it's a one a month, the way it is right now, my pay is the same whether I go to that meeting or not.
Correct, and it'd be the same.
The assumption being that I generally go to the meetings.
Yes.
In either A, B, or C, have we changed it that my compensation for my one a month committee meeting is contingent upon me attending that meeting?
That is not changed.
Okay, I, I, I would like that addition personally, but I'm, I'm happy what anybody else wants. It's too much paper.
Counselor Jensen, please.
Okay, so just.
Who else does it? County does theirs that way? Aman does it that way?
Rath does it that way.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so just to clarify, so you say you're paid for one committee meeting a month. But what if, okay, so is that just one, for instance, Souths Grove meeting? Or is that, because I could, in a, in a month, I could attend three committee meetings or more. So is that, are you paid for each committee meeting that you go to or just the one? So if I go to Souths Grove, then I'm not paid for, um, FCSS or library or whatever. I, you know, explain that to me.
That's what I found odd when I arrived here.
Okay.
Just let Jeff speak, please.
Um, I feel bad that in month forty-seven, we're not sure how you're compensated.
Well, I was just saying, it comes around. I've never, I've never put in for more than one, because I don't know.
So, the last council had this exact same grapple before the election, by the way. So you can, you can blame the collective wisdom of the last guys if you wish. There's a couple of them in the gallery, ones in the gallery. Your current policy reads that your base rate considers one meeting for each of your assigned committees.
That's right.
If you go over that, there's.
Well, that's what it is. It always.
And you, and you submit for that. Now again, to Counselor Burton, if you want to have a structure that you submit for all committee meetings, that's fine. I don't want to have staff running around wondering if you made it to the Chinook Arch Library meeting. I don't want to do that. So I don't have any problem with saying, here's a base rate for attending your council meetings. And then you just submit for every committee meeting. But it's on you to submit. And if you don't, we're not going to pay you for it.
All right.
Mayor?
So can we maybe go back on the principles and fix that? It'll be fairly simple to fix. Under two, one, where say elected official must strive to attend all assigned committee meeting and arrange for a substitute when available. Why can't we use and report to administration via the per, whatever you call your, your thing? Every month, at the end of every month, on their attendance.
I'm not going to scrutinize them. I'm going to tell you right now, I'm going to trust you and initial them and they're going to be paid, so.
Yeah, I'm not worried about a trust issue.
Yeah, just to clarify, if I can, you're talking about you're getting paid for one committee meeting a month. I go to two guaranteed.
No, you're going to pay to be, to be in the committee once a month. You're assigned.
For each of the committee you assign.
If we had more than one.
So you could have four committees.
I was in the same thought as you.
So one of my observations was that we had some counselors who were on more committees than others. We had some counselors, in most cases the same counselors, who had multiple meetings on those multiple committees. To the point where I was concerned are some of those counselors being overtaxed. And in my mind, not mentioning any names.
You're staring at me though.
In my mind, I think there should be a direct correlation between the number of meetings and your compensation. So if, for example, Counselor Brown attended eight council or eight committee meetings or events or functions or, the list goes on and, and they're all authorized in a month. And, and I hit one of my down months and I'm at two, I think I should receive compensation for two and she should receive compensation for eight. That's how I view it. And that's how the county does it. I think the graph, Raymond does it that way. So anyway.
Oh, what's the number?
Raymond's a hundred and thirty for two hour meeting and that's more after two hours.
And you would have, so in your scenario, if I might, Mr. Chair, so in your scenario, Counselor Burton, that counselor, again, I won't look anywhere on the table specifically, but that counselor, if they attended four times for the same committee, they should be submitting a per diem for three of those meetings for that one.
Exactly what we always said.
And if there, and there's a rate that if it's under four hours or greater than four, one thirty to two fifty-five, I might be grabbing numbers, but it's something like.
But, but what that doesn't.
Same thing, it's just.
Well, except, but what that doesn't do is, let's say I don't attend either of my two meetings. So I, I would like it, when I say direct to me, really direct compensation. That's just me. That's my opinion. And that's, when other people hear how we do it, they're like, what? You know, like the guys at the county, they're saying, well, what do you mean? You don't, if I attend more, I get paid for more. If I attend less, I get paid for less.
I guess, do we want, is everyone not, do we want to go around the table? Is everyone in agreeance about a per meeting pay?
I'm not trying to push it. I'm just saying that's, that would sit best with me, but I'm fine with whatever.
Rather than, uh, just a base? Yep, Mayor?
So Jeff, my question to you, going back to what you mentioned a few minutes ago, is you say, you said if the counselor were to bring back a paper every month with the name of the, you could even make them a little form.
Name and a date.
A new form, just with their, their committees on it and tick what you have in.
And where it was so that we would know if it kicked in the.
That there's a mileage compensation piece or.
Right. Why couldn't we do it with a new form? A new form would be easier.
Is everyone okay with Counselor Brown? And then we'll move along?
In the essence of time.
Well, we need to know, I want to know how to revise.
No, so, so this isn't my baby, but, so what I will say to this is, I feel like Counselor, um, Granger and Counselor Court, your uncomfortableness in regards to your foreseen as it being freebies.
Yeah.
I hear you. I do find it interesting though, that in other municipalities, like ones right around us, counselors, um, get benefits.
Exactly.
They get health benefits, dental benefits and.
You have to pay.
Agreed, but that's part of the perks of being a counselor is they get it offered. We don't, bless our hearts, we don't have a lot of perks to being a counselor. We come, we do the job and we love it. Or you don't run for council, essentially, right? And so, um, I hear what you're saying in regards to being uncomfortable, which is why I don't know that I've ever gone in and to the pool and said, no, I get it for free. I've paid every time I step foot in them. So I'm just saying that's where it came from. That's why it was brought up was because we're looking at other municipalities that are getting benefits. And this was a way of us not having benefits, but kind of having a benefit. So that's where it came from.
I get paid, so I'm, that's my benefit, so.
And you're not wrong. You're right. You're right. That's just, I'm telling you where it came from.
Is everyone, Counselor Granger, and then we're gonna have a little poll there?
That's what I was gonna say, let's do the poll.
Is everyone okay, well, is everyone okay with option C or are we going with the per meeting that Counselor Burton has suggested? What's everyone feeling?
I think for me, one per meeting.
Per meeting.
Option C, per meeting, yeah.
So I guess should we ask administration to bring back option C plus the per meeting and we make a decision? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Bring us to and.
Hate us or like us for it.
Hey, they can change it.
They can change it themselves, yeah.
I mean, Counselor Court, I guess at the end of the day, like, someone has to make the decision and it's.
Yeah. Like, we'll make this decision for the future council. If they want to change it, they can do it.
For sure. Absolutely.
Okay, is everyone okay with this?
Yep.
Maybe not, maybe okay. Okay. All right, moving on to. I was. I was doing great. Always get caught up in something. Um, five D, the tax penalty waiver request. Jeff?
So you, you have a letter, uh, from a new home buyer in the community and based on the timing of when they purchased their house, uh, there were some taxes that were not taken care of, that they were not aware of and, and they went over the September first deadline when penalties were incurred. When they found out about it, and in my administration, in our opinion, they did everything they could to remedy the issue. When they found out about it, and in my administration, in our opinion, they did everything they could to remedy the issue. So they paid everything, they they paid the penalty, they went on the tip program. So that, you know, that I feel they've done everything they can. I do believe this, uh, and in fact, if if maybe there is an issue, the lawyer probably should have caught that. I'm not clear as to why they didn't, but.
Yeah.
Administratively, we feel they've done everything they can and it might be reasonable to look at that penalty.
Councillor Brown.
So that's exactly what I was gonna say. I feel like this uh couple that bought the house, we love that they bought a house in Curdston, and um I feel like the two hundred and forty two dollars and sixty four cents in the late fee um should be waived, because when they did find out how much was owing, they paid it on the spot, like you just said, and then signed up for the tip program. So I, I think this is a, uh, yeah.
Councillor Burton, councillor Granger.
I hate to be that guy.
You're gonna do it, are you?
Well, I've, I've literally done hundreds of these as the lawyer. And if you buy in the first part of the year, no matter when you buy, there's a tax adjustment between the two parties. And if you buy in the first half of the year, you're the one that has to go pay it and you are compensated by the person who sold you the house for their share of the month. So I just, and I know it's two hundred and forty two dollars, but I have trouble differentiating this from anybody else who for any other reason missed going in and paying their taxes on July fir- or June first, June thirtieth. Uh oh, I'm getting the look.
We're not gonna debate this tonight, but councillor Brown can respond, and then councillor Granger, and we'll move on.
I'm not debating this, cuz I'm feeling like I'm debating this right now.
By my, you you can, you just can't make a resolution. We'll have to prepare a resolution.
Ready?
Here, here we go.
So this is, let's discuss this councillor. So I agree with what you're saying, but in this situation, I do not feel like this was a, this was a Cody and Kendra um whoops, this wasn't their whoops. I feel like this was a lawyer that didn't catch it, for whatever reason, I don't know, but you as the lawyer, and we love your lawyer brain, by the way, and of course, you would catch it, but it didn't get caught. So I just feel like this is a, I think you need to look at this just a little different.
Councillor Granger.
I agree with uh councillor Burton. Doesn't matter if it's twenty four dollars, two hundred and forty two dollars or two thousand four hundred dollars, a bylaw is a bylaw. The fly in the ointment here is the lawyer. They should be assessed per the bylaw and they can go after the lawyer and get him to pay the two hundred and forty dollars.
So. Indifference, I don't think it is the lawyer. When I look at it, again, so if you buy in the first part of the year, you adjust, let's say I buy councillor Court's house. In March. So he owes, he owes three, three of the twelve months of taxes and I'm going to owe nine. We both know they're not payable till June thirtieth. So he can't pay the taxes in advance. What does he do? He adjusts between us. So he gives me his three months' worth, on the understanding that on June thirtieth, I go pay it. They didn't. Has nothing to do with the lawyer.
Councillor Brown.
Hi. So, so I personally bought a house and took effect on, it was, I think it was June, a few years back. And at no point did me and the owner have a sit down saying, you owe for this many months and I own for that many months. That did not happen, but what I can tell you, if you let me finish, is what I can tell you is, when I got to my lawyer, my lawyer is the one who said, now Jim and Paula, don't forget that you will owe duh duh duh. You owe us this, for the house this, and your taxes this. So it was not a me and Joe blow that I bought the house from. We didn't have that.
I just use that as an example. It's called a statement of adjustments and it'll be in your documents. And it shows one of the adjustments being the tax adjustment. So it'll say how much for the year, if it's been assessed, if it hasn't, it's based on the prior year. It shows that, and then it shows that courts had to pay three months, I have to pay nine months. But when I leave the office with my statement of adjustments in my documents, I know that on June thirtieth, I have to pay for the whole year. Partly with his money, partly with mine, and I got his money in the adjustments on the purchase price.
Councillor Brown.
Just a quick question, where did you get that adjustment papers from?
Your lawyer.
Lawyer creates it.
The lawyer creates it.
But that's my point. You got it from the lawyer. So the lawyer must not have let them know.
Or they, there's some other reason.
Mayor.
That's fair.
Okay, so my question was, going along with your reasoning. We do not know in this letter if that couple received a statement of adjustment. And we do not know if they have it. That letter doesn't tell us that. All what we have is, they did all the best they could to try not to carry on their thing. But I agree with you that if they had a statement of adjustment, they maybe have not paid attention to it. It's quite possible.
I guess that's more likely.
And they are new, brand new to the community. It, those type of thing can happen. But the question is, did they have a statement of adjustment? I would suspect they did.
I'd be shocked if they did.
Well, you know, I use the same office, law office and you get an adjustment. It's part of the paper.
All right, moving along. Have a vote on this next week. Okay, moving on to five E, donation request. Which we will have Jeff talk about, but we may want to push this off to the next council.
Okay, can I, can I suggest something?
Yeah, absolutely.
For that donation, I'm part of the uh Calston and County Auxiliary. And I called the um, one of the president of the, the group. We always want to work with the community foundation. It has not always worked the way we want. But I think their request for that five thousand will be best sent to the auxiliary, because we would be able to help them with that for a good purpose. And I do not think that the town should start to take on those type of big donations. So I would suggest that we um have some, the administration contact Wendy Schaefer or uh Rowena Phillips and tell them to contact the auxiliary and make a request to them for five thousand dollars.
Can I ask a question? Mayor, when I read this, I thought this was the auxiliary, so.
No, it's not.
I know there are ladies in town that, like, they do sell things. Is that the auxiliary?
Yeah, we, we.
Then who is this?
That is a community health foundation, which normally uh raise funds for very large purchases for the hospital. We do quite a bit of additional uh projects. Like this year, we spent over sixty five thousand dollar for the hospital. But this is an eighty two thousand dollar, it's even bigger. And it's interesting that they talk about a med fusion pump, because we bought that pump, but anyway, it could be an error on that paper. So.
So what are you suggesting?
I suggest that the community health foundation contact the Calston and Calston County Auxiliary and request five thousand dollar towards the donation for this.
Okay, I got you. I was just confused who was auxiliary and who wasn't.
So you suggest that we donate to auxiliary and not to the.
No, don't, no, to ask that group, that asks for the town to give them that. To go through the auxiliary to get their five thousand. I really don't think that the town should be involved in that type of, of fundraising.
The funding would eventually get to them anyhow, right?
I'm sorry?
Thing we donate would eventually get to this group. Through the auxiliary, whatever they're trying to buy. Eventually, that's what's gonna, that's the whole purpose, right?
We, we do not come to the town to get the money. We raise money, we do casinos, we do lots of things. We can help them with that.
Okay, I got you. Now you'll give them the.
They have the money.
Okay, that's. Okay.
What would you like to do here?
Well, we can't not make very much of this meaning, but I would recommend personally that we ask the community foundation to contact the Calston and Calston County.
Agreed.
Auxiliary.
You do have a recommendation to councillor, you can vote on that.
Okay, is everyone, yep, the recommendation? All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Moving. Uh, moving on to five F, the draft, uh, draft project policy. Jess or Josh?
I say I don't know which name I gave you, but I can speak to this one that. In light of some requests, uh, you've had recent delegations uh seeking to put on major events. Council wanted us to look at some policy around how we could move those through effectively and to look at those projects. Um, you might recall, councillor, you already had what was called a capital project policy that already existed. And then essentially, and and in this one in your background, or by the way, we've, we've made it generic to say project policy. And we've added a second piece that says, a project is either an endeavor focused on construction improvement or development of an asset or the execution of initiatives or activities that deliver substantial outcomes, often involving coordinated efforts, resources, and strategic planning. And the rest of the policy kind of plays out roughly the same. They come to administration, we put them through, you need to answer the following things. We do up a recommendation, we give it back to them. If they still wish to come to council with that, they can. We bring the administrative recommendation to council, along with if we want to involve committees, for example, it may be parks and rec or something like that, if it's that type of asset infrastructure. And then council can make a decision. So when we reviewed this idea of substantial projects, our opinion is that simply adding it to this current and just amending this uh current policy seemed to be the most straightforward way to do it, and the criteria seemed relatively transferable between large operational and and capital. So what you have in front of you is a draft of what that policy could look like. And uh we can take your feedback tonight and and after that, we can bring it back for approval next meeting.
Mayor.
Personally, my comment, I like that policy. I think it's something that I always felt there was a gap. And I feel that policy kinda bridges that gap and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on this?
I think it's very well written. Agreed. It's great.
Okay, moving on to other business, um, the Main Street Tree Survey. Um, if you guys have looked through that, uh, Jeff can maybe give us a quick summary of what the discussion was.
Yes, we had sixteen respondents. Uh, we personally delivered the invitation to give feedback to every business that had a tree in front of their property and and you can see all that. Um, responses were, um, I guess if I jump to the end, but you know, we need to look at, the the g- the general feedback was to keep them trimmed up. Now, there's a, if you go look at some of those, to tr- to trim them up means hypothetically that you may have a very Dr. Seuss looking tree with this really long trunk and then a tiny little canopy at the top, which is not healthy for the tree. So to trim them up isn't going to increase exposure to most of those signs on the building fronts, but the business owners, not exclusively, but generally felt that that was a reasonable approach. So we'll look at, we have to factor the health of the tree, of course, and and how much of that canopy you're taking down, but we can look at that uh and how much of those we can trim up and and open that up as much as we can.
Uh, councillor Brown and the mayor.
So I love that we did this. Thank you for doing it. Um, I personally love the trees on our main street and would truly hate for them to be completely removed. I do love the idea of trimming them up, but I was also wondering, as the ones die or whatever it is, is there another kind of tree that we should be looking at would fit that better? That would be more, I don't know, I don't know trees, but is there a better fit? So that we're not blocking, cuz look, our main street, we need all the help we can get and bringing people to the businesses. And so I'm just thinking, as they die and they do, um, if maybe we need to look at replacing them, you know, kinda like the temple did, they removed that one whole side because they had, I don't know what it's called, but they were dying and then. Agreed, and then they replaced them with other things. I'm just wondering if that's something we should possibly look at. Just a thought.
Lombardi poppers are tall and skinny. You have options like. But they're fragile. The balance on Main Street is, one is you're in a difficult environment for trees.
Agreed.
Right? You're in asphalt, the ground temperature is hot, they don't have a lot of place to expand roots. We don't want, we don't want trees that have shallow taproots. We'll just wreck this, we'll wreck sidewalks and, right, we start to have all that problem, so. I think the trees, the the variety of tree, and again, this goes back long before my time, but my guess is they were probably well thought out.
Okay.
As far as the most appropriate tree. But um, you know, we'll, we'll have a good look. I appreciate, I was talking with councillor Kenley, we still have some work to do on uh traffic control visibility on the one. There's one crosswalk where it's poor.
One, one direction.
Yeah, so it's the one direction that's poor. Um, other than that, it's not bad, so we gotta do some more work there. But yeah, we can just look at as they grow, keeping the canopy as high as we can, you know, there. Most people value downtown urban trees for their canopy and their shade.
Historically, the elm tree did do this over top of everything. But then they, now they have that disease, right?
Yeah.
That's why they chose elm before.
That's why they took those out. Subject. We, we struggle with the same thing, just here at the museum. If you look at the limes or the lime scale on them. They're very susceptible to disease, so.
Mayor, councillor Jensen, councillor Granger.
So in the winter, we have no problem with visibility, there's no, no leaves. So essentially, it's when, when uh July start to hit.
Four months.
That you start to have too much foliage. And so I'm wondering, is that at that point where we could kinda trim down the foliage?
Again, that's a difficult time to heavily trim trees for their health, right? Cuz they're growing aggressively. We wanna be careful.
Yeah.
Councillor Jensen.
Yeah, I just know that the beautification committee years ago went to a lot of work to put those trees in and everything and expense. Um, I'm personally not in favor of removing them. You know, also knowing that we're going to be redoing Main Street in the next few years, it doesn't make sense to me to spend money on um, removing trees when they're going to be removed anyway. So I'm, I'm not really in favor of it.
Councillor Granger.
I, I would agree with councillor Jensen. Um, I was gonna say what she just said. When we get to Main Street one day, all those trees will come down because they're out in the right spots, et cetera, et cetera, so we'll get brand new trees. Whenever we do that, let's try and choose a species that can grow and get a canopy. Um, check with Banff, we did this in two thousand and seven.
Awesome. My only add to this is, I still would like the three trees torn out that are by the traffic lights, by the pedestrian lights. That's just my, my only thing.
Just, when I look at those, there's definitely one that needs to be cut way back or taken out or something.
On the west side, councillor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one is not good.
Okay, uh, let's move through this other business and we can have some dinner. And yeah, Glen Mott's survey. Jeff or Josh wanna speak to this?
Uh, Mr. Motts had sent out a survey for review. Um, he's asking essentially, so I went on there just to see if I could fill it out, and it, and it's specifically asking and saying, are you representing your council with your responses? And uh I couldn't answer that truthfully, and so I thought we better bring it here tonight and just get a little bit of feedback from you on. Um, if you have a strong opinion and a, a, we'll call it a cohesive opinion on, I believe there's about twelve question, eleven questions.
Yeah.
Some feedback on those so that I can answer on behalf of the town.
Can, can we go through the questions?
Yep, okay. Do you want me to speak or do you wanna do it?
No, go ahead, councillor.
Oh, I don't care.
Okay, um, yes. Yep, okay. Uh, given the current economic realities in Canada, should the government be focused on stimulus spending or reducing inflation?
I think by reducing inflation, you're focusing on stimulus spending.
That's right.
So I would go with uh reducing inflation.
Agreed.
Personally.
Anyone have any opposition?
Yeah, I, 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 I think that.
Yeah, I, 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 I think that stimulus spending includes municipal projects. Uh, uh, I, I mean, if you can get fed, you know, remember the three-way program a number of years ago? And that was an amazing, amazingly successful program across the country where the province paid a third, the feds paid a third. Municipalities paid a third and a lot of the municipalities back then that I worked for in engineering departments, the only way we got funding was through that program. So there's an example of where stimulus spending works. That's my thought.
Well, there's an option for both, so that's good.
To me stimulus spending just means more taxpayers are paying for whatever.
Around to us.
Taxpayers are paying anyway.
Can reduce inflation, some of that stuff will happen.
Okay. Is, uh, we got both reduce inflation or stimulus spending? How many are for both? Okay, inflation. Great. Reduce inflation.
In four, in four, you could have an infrastructure program.
Okay, which federal programs create, would create jobs or investments in your community? Um, we'll just go through them and do a little check mark in your head if you believe that. Uh, youth training programs, infrastructure programs.
I'm infrastructure.
Yeah, rural internet, mobile coverage. Uh, skill, skill training programs.
Cam, yeah, you know, in our town, the Canada job program really did have a lot of, uh, of students. And that is something in our town that it really helped.
Well, we could check more than one.
Yep. Okay, so we got three so far, uh, expand or continue federal wage subsidy programs. No? Rural community job creation programs. Isn't that kind of the same that we were just talking about? Support for new companies, restart of businesses. And programs or incentives to address impacts of tariffs and trade disruption. So I think the three or four there that we. Got those? How has the ongoing cost of living crisis impacted the economic development plan in your community?
Do you have destroyed it as an option?
Significant impact probably is one that we're all agreeing. Everyone, do any, go through the rest?
That's what says significant?
Sectors of the economy that focus for your community, agriculture.
The service sector is the obvious one.
Sector tourism.
Service sector, energy.
It's techn- technology is, is new technology that we have part of that? But it doesn't give us any employment really.
My three were agriculture, service and tourism. Everyone okay with that? Uh, this is a long one, okay. Federal government continued inflationary spending, blah, 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 the P, parliamentary officer. Uh, budget deficit to increase to sixty eight point five billion, two point two percent of GDP. Twenty twenty, federal debt to GDP ratio is projected from forty one to forty three percent. How is your municipality managing these increasing costs? Associated with inflation, cutting costs and reducing services? Yes, in my opinion.
Did we reduce services?
Well.
We haven't done that.
Cut costs.
My point of view.
Soon as you take anything, sorry for me, as soon as you take a dollar from reserves. You are affecting potentially future services, right? Because that's what we put those dollars there for. So if we put thousand dollars in reserve A. And because to keep, to keep from increasing our tax. We've been borrowing. Two percent, which we did, then you're cutting something somewhere that doesn't come from.
Well.
The air, it comes from a reserve account and we did that. We spent money out of reserves and that's my opinion is. We may not be reducing services or supplies now, but we've conceptually reduced it next year or the next year.
Mayor, councillor Cork.
The way I view it, I would say under other, we should have. Something to do with responsible budgeting and finding cost efficiencies. That's what we did in this town.
Write that in there.
You know, that's what we did. That's the way we manage, not to deepen our reserve.
So under other, could you write what mayor just wrote there?
Well, we, we did some of both, but I still like yours better.
Uh, impact, what impact have recent tariffs and trade policies had on your community's business?
I would say moderate. I don't really know that we had as much impact as.
The agriculture guys did have some impact. Cause they'd be discussing it at the egg society and they'd say. Like it varied week to week whether they could take their animals or their, or their product. Or their minerals like, um, Burke's business, like they couldn't sell for a while and. So in town, less so, but that's still our community.
I would say it, I mean, it's not as troublesome as, as Edmonton or Calgary.
Moderate?
I would say.
What is the top concern you are hearing from the federal government's approach to Alberta?
Just put them all there.
I'm not going to comment. Councillor Granger, I'm not going to comment on this one.
I will, Western Indian Nation and National Unity.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I thought it would be.
I want to go down this rabbit hole with. Any, uh, can we select more than one on that one?
And ten?
Top concern.
Uh, what should be the federal government's priority to support Alberta? Check all that apply. Fiscal responsibility, infrastructure investments, policies, reduce barriers, support for energy.
Put them all. Yeah, all I know you have though.
Are there any other issues that you would like Glen Mott advocate for?
Keep up the good work.
Awesome. Councillor Brown.
I know, but you missed one. One of the most important ones that I thought for sure the lawyer would bring up. Is that, is, is what about, what if, no, but we want, we want, um. Repeat offenders and we want, we want.
Oh, yes, yes, that's federal.
I'm saying it's federal.
Well, some of it isn't, some of it isn't.
A lot is with the social.
Telling us it's federal and federal is telling us it's part of provincial, but this goes to the feds, so I think it should be under that. I think that.
Policing issue.
Agreed, I think that should be in this. We've already written the letters in regards to it. Hundred percent crime reduction and once we're putting, once, once we're putting, um, people in jail. We're just kicking them back out to reoffend and that's not okay, but the police have no choice, anyway. Jeff, you know what we're trying to say?
Yeah, and almost all those judges for that kind of stuff is provincial, but your point's still well made, there's a, there's a federal aspect as well. So let's do it.
Thank you all for, for taking in that survey. We covered these next two items here, the, um, Bramington Carriage Museum request. Um, Jeff can talk to us a little bit. This is what councillor Brown and councillor Granger have done over the years. Councillor Jensen, I think.
You guys are so good, we'll, we delegate you again.
The timing was interesting because again, the new. So technically you're still the councillors and.
Well, we'll make sure the mayor goes.
In order for them to plan, I would, uh, she does want to hear from us by the end of the week. So I was looking to see if some of you were willing.
Mayor and mayor elect can go.
I'm talking about the mayor elect.
Yeah, well, uh, what is it? One, two, three?
Councillor Jensen's very good at that if she wants to go.
I mean, anyone can go. We're still, no? Councillor Brown and Mayor Cronin, are you going too?
Sure.
I'm gonna go because I want.
Can we do the lights after our lunch? Cause I do have a comment about that.
Uh, I'll take a motion for a fifty, twenty minute break.
I'll make it.
All in favor? Thank you. The gallery we just had.
I make a motion to come back in session.
Thank you all in favor. All right. We will move on to our last business item, the Festival of Lights request. Looks like they are asking or.
One fireworks for Christmas show.
Yeah. Uh, councillor Burton.
So I had I had expressed a thought last year. That I I thought the the whole event was really good and the fireworks just really made it stand out, you know, like who else has fireworks in the wintertime? And I just thought as a business, you know, when Sam was in, was it Sam, which of the boys? Shiver of the
Sam Hudson.
Yeah, when he was in here. You know, he thought of a fall event and said, well, maybe more fit with that. And councillor Brown said, well, anything we can do is good for business, especially when we're like we just talked about a tourist services type end of the road community. I I would be in favor of something like same as we have a budget for fireworks for the, you know, Canada Day and Heritage Day. What did we spend five thousand, was it?
Yeah, it's a lot more than five thousand.
That was my fault, sorry.
What what did we spend on the fireworks last winter?
It was five thousand because we had to cancel the Canada
Yeah. So is ten the new five? Is that what you're telling me?
It was for heritage weekend by first.
Right. Anyway,
They're fantastic.
How cool would it be? No, they were. How cool would it be if we had as part of our festival of lights, all those lights? That just seems like such a natural thing to me. Brings people to the community. Those of you, councillor Granger, you did you go to the cloud with me one time on the parade?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Santa Claus parade, like it's a big deal, you know? A lot of people come into that community and kind of people who have moved who are from there who live elsewhere, they come back to that. I just think that would be a good, something we could talk about.
I was just gonna add, um, we don't have a line item for Festival of Lights, correct? Like a
Well, we have a donation, we give.
I know it's a donation, but like we don't have like, it's not like a a line Festival of Lights is getting X amount of money every year.
Every year, we're pretty well.
Yeah.
So we have Jill twenty-five hundred, I believe, that they get every year. I just, I'm not trying to come down on Festival of Lights at all. My mother-in-law volunteers, she'd kill me when I say what I'm gonna say. But this is quickly just becoming a completely town-sponsored and run program. This is shifting rapidly from the volunteer base. So now they have three volunteers, maybe? And the town's gonna do most of the labor, almost all the cost. I would just caution you.
No, yeah.
The expectation's going to build and it's going to, once Trudy leaves us, less for her heart.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Then this thing doesn't have traction anymore.
No legs.
But it will, everyone will look to the town to say, this is your event and it will die at your hand. And this is a great example of a community initiative that was a grassroots initiative that is fast
A very common thing.
A very, like, if you look at the thousands in labor we already put in, I will bet with our twenty-five hundred in labor and the five thousand last year for fireworks. I'll bet we're pushing twenty thousand dollars. We're into this event now.
For one day.
For an evening.
For an evening.
That's what I mean.
Getting can, I'm like, my people are are, they're fine with it. They tolerate it, but it is not a welcome time when Festival of Lights comes around.
I was gonna, do they, especially with lights aware of like that concern?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
They just don't care.
Already putting all their lights around their poles right now.
So I just, I just throw that out that I I agree with everything you said, councillor Burton, that it's a, it's a great thing and it's unique and that's, that's fine. I mean, but it's a lot of money and resources from
Councillor Brown, councillor Granger.
So my question then would be, so I can't remember if it was last year or the year before. Um, that twenty-five hundred dollars that we normally gave them, they requested just for us to put it into our own building and to put gemstone lights up or something. And so we did that. So would there be anything wrong with for us to say this year, rather than give the two thousand five hundred dollar, we'd be happy to put that towards um, um, the fireworks, but you need to go looking for the other money?
We've already given them their twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
So they could choose to do that, but that wasn't their proposal here.
Right. I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I get it.
Councillor Granger.
So given you'll be looking at a twenty thousand dollar expenditure. Um, what are they asking for again for the five grand? Well, I mean,
Five grand gives them a half.
Additional five grand in addition to what in addition to what we're already doing. Fireworks, because they thought it was a good idea and as councillor Burton points out, they're not putting anything into this. And so at some point.
These ladies put a tremendous.
I like his idea.
Yeah.
They're putting a pile into it.
I went to, I went to the businesses via the chamber.
Agreed.
Like, like Trudy and company, I've stopped on the road and said, you guys are doing wonderful things. But I'm talking about the businesses. So if, if in my head, I'm saying, how would I justify the five besides I like fireworks? It would be if it brings business to town. Well, let the businesses tell me.
Yeah, and they haven't. So my point was, they're just asking for five grand to pay for a bunch of fireworks. Like we did last year and they're not coming to us with, well, you know, we've, we've, we've got forty-five hundred dollars. That we can throw at it as well. They're, they're, they're not throwing anything at it and I'm, I'm starting to think this is too much.
Councillor Court.
Uh, have they gone after corporate sponsors? Do we know? Cause I think there's somebody in this town that would probably donate to that thousand bucks here, thousand bucks here.
I'm sorry.
I could name three off my top of my head.
Maybe Gem Lights would sponsor the fireworks.
I think, I could think of three or four if they went and talked to them, they would probably get something.
You know, and I think, I think that's.
I'll go with them, talk to them if they want.
Councillor Brown.
So I, I love your idea councillor. I'm agreeing with you. Look at that.
As you usually do.
Right. No, I, I think that's a fantastic idea. I like the idea of, and you brought it up as well, of setting. An amount that we're comfortable with, because like anything, it's not our, we don't wanna take over. Soccer, baseball, we don't need one more dang thing for the town to run. So we wanna continue, but. Like councillor Jensen, I'm agreeing with you too. Who knew? That in fact, we want economic growth and development to continue and we need to make sure that we are. Spending our businesses money on bringing business into town. So I really love the idea that you've presented in regards to setting a cap. Whatever we're comfortable with and we'll go up to this amount pending you have gone out and gotten your whatever that is.
Match money.
Yeah, matching money. I like that idea. As a one-time, as a one-time, uh, line item, I would say.
So is that our response to them is?
Is that for twenty twenty-five? Because you haven't budgeted it.
No, we haven't.
So my, so like I was talking to Jeff at this, I would be in support of this only if. We were under budget in some light items that we could find the money, not new money, but just coming together and maybe there's some that were under budget, we could bring.
We can do that, you might convince me.
I thought no way you can't find it.
I feel like going forward, um, I do feel like going forward though councillor Burton, that I believe that we should set a cap and a match or something. Going forward, but for this time around, if we can find the money, that's.
Allocated.
And that they are under the impression that it's not a. A guarantee every year that they're getting fireworks money. Thank you.
Well, just, just to start, there is, uh, council, councillors that will never use. The professional development money that was in their money. In their, in their account and I'm sure Jeff can find a little bit of money there, can't you? There is, uh, at least.
Find it anywhere if he wants.
There is some professional development money that is possibly would come to a good twenty-five hundred or something.
I guess so. My question tonight is, what is everyone's, we haven't budgeted it. What is everyone's thoughts on? If it's found, are we okay? Or are we saying thanks, but next year?
I, I, I like what you just brought up councillor. I feel like if, if we can, as the mayor has pointed out, pull it out of existing funds. That have been budgeted but not used, I would, I think it's appropriate to say twenty-five hundred dollars. That the town is willing to put forward in a matching, in a matching, um.
This year?
Well, it's, it's years they wanted.
They're asking for now, if we can find it.
Okay, if we can find twenty-five, what if they don't come up with their twenty-five?
And we don't pay it.
Okay.
But what I'm, so.
It's a matching grant.
To match right now.
Well, if, if they.
They come up with twenty-five hundred, we give them twenty-five hundred.
Same. That's a mashing grant. You have to do your part and we'll do our part.
If you have anything.
That's what I would pitch. Isn't that what you said councillor? Yeah.
Well, I thought you were talking future.
No.
But I like, uh, I, I can, I like that, that res, or that.
But so.
Make that motion and I'll vote for it.
Well, actually says it in their.
My next, my next question.
Only make a recommendation.
Oh, yeah.
My next, we have already budgeted twenty-five hundred for them, correct?
And they've gotten.
But they already took that. They want twenty-five hundred more.
Well, they were five.
So that's, so are we.
We don't give them five.
Okay, with giving them another twenty-five.
They've already got twenty-five.
So I would like to direct administration, because we can't make a motion here.
You can recommend council to direct administration.
Clearly. I'd like to recommend a council to direct administration to. Put together a mashing grant up to the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, for the Festival of Lights Committee, express, expressing our gratitude for the amount of work. That they do to beautify our committee and bring our community and bring, um, economic growth and development. And this is, uh, uh, this is, um, for this year, I think it's important to say.
For the fireworks.
For the fireworks for two thousand and twenty-five.
You gotta save the twenty-five hundred from existing.
Twenty-five hundred dollars from existing funds. Yes, thank you.
Some, uh, not to be that guy, but what's stopping them from saying, I got my twenty-five hundred dollars, but it was the twenty-five hundred dollars we gave them.
That's brilliant councillor.
I'm just, that's what I would do. There may, hey, we got it right here.
No, but the concept.
I know the concept.
That we talked about was raising it from our community.
So what do we say?
Show us how you raised it.
Okay, if they could show us how they got it, great.
If she said raised the money, that's not, if we've already given them the money, that's not raised.
Could we be required to raise some of the funds to contribute to cause? So they're thinking about that way already.
Jeff, just to point out, they have to give us back this money. They can't buy fireworks. So again, the town gets to buy them, we get to set them up with all the mortars.
Sure do.
To do all that work, we have to discharge them like, again, we've now added, I got, I'm gonna pay a whole bunch of people over time to do fireworks on the evening festival of lights. Which again, it may be fine, but this is just becoming a town event and I, 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 I think it's a great event, but let me say that. One is we have completely unsubstantiated economic impact. We don't know.
Exactly, right.
It's probably mostly just local people going out.
Yeah.
I agree.
That's likely what it is and that's maybe fine too.
And McLeod's isn't. Now, they have way more history behind them, but I think it's possible.
It's great. I, I can't express that enough. It looks awesome everywhere and those, those folks do a ton of work, but I just. I'm just saying we need to be cautious here because they're gonna give us back our money so that we can do all the work for them on, with the money we gave them.
Question.
Is effectively what's gonna happen.
Councillor Jensen just had a question or a.
Well. I'm going to change the tone a bit. So if you want, if you're answering him, then go ahead.
So on that. There are other people in our communities, McGrath, Raymond, Curdston area Blood Tribe, who do fireworks. Does it have to be the town of Curdston doing them?
They have a commercial fireworks license, anyone can do it.
Yeah.
Cause I know the Blood Tribe does them, the.
It's not a Smith family.
Smith family.
Yeah.
Somebody's doing them in Hillspring.
Yeah.
Hillspring, Hillspring does them or Glenwood.
Firefighters can do it. And that's fine.
I'm just saying, it, it doesn't stipulate that it has to be the town of Curdston.
So in.
Giving more hours.
It probably is.
Okay.
And again, that's probably fine, but for us it is, we're the ones that own the mortars, we're the ones that own all the equipment.
Yeah, I get it.
Again, it's fine. It's just.
Whoever.
We, we find ourselves being the, the driving force behind this event, which has evolved really quickly in just a few years.
I agree.
It's really transformed.
So I had a lot of.
Councillor Jensen, then councillor Burton.
Okay, I was just wondering, so looking at this. And thinking that this is maybe, um, fireworks helps with mental health, I'm wondering if they could go to FCSS for funding. Because I know that towards the end of the year, sometimes FCSS is trying to unload some money. So I'm just wondering, is that an option for them?
Would that be?
It's a good option if it's viable.
Would that be, well, that's a questionable, I don't know.
I don't know if that would fit.
Okay, just councillor, and then we'll move on. Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah.
It's on the table.
So Jeff, again, your, your, your comments are very well-founded and, and I. Take them into account when I, when I would agree with that motion, because some of those are. You know, they're not, I call them soft costs. In other words, yes, like maybe one guy works in the evening doing that and he takes an afternoon off or they're. You know, we already own some of the stuff, like I, I don't discount anything you've said, but I think the other side of that coin is. That we're in a position that we can do some of those things, right? And, you know, because we already own it, because we have guys who have licenses, because we can shift work schedules a little bit to culminate it. So I, I would, I think there's enough potential merit. Looking at what Tabor does with their Corn Fest or McLeod does with their Santa Claus Parade. I think it has enough merit that, that I, I, you know, support that, that we say, hey, we're, we're giving you matching grants. If the community thinks they want it, they'll get it then. If they don't, we won't.
Okay, there is.
Makes sense.
But I, but I do feel it's important to say for twenty twenty-five, this isn't necessarily a year. We're not putting this in for the next twenty years, because we're, we need to look at this a year at a time. So I think as of right now, that, that's important in my motion to say for, for November, end of November.
If we put that in the letter and that way, they. Are looking forward, one, they could come at budget time.
Right.
And two, then they can know, okay, going forward, we've got some work to do and let's involve the chamber.
Okay, there's a recommendation on the table. Everyone, all on paper? Thank you. Okay, uh, any questions from any councillor, mayor going forward? If none, then we'll go through some correspondence. Um, yes, yep.
I may have a one question, just to make sure. The first meeting for the new council will be October the twentieth?
Uh, it's, it's tentatively planned for that. So just if, if I might, Mr. Chair, real quick. There's new requirements for councillor education and orientation this year and we cannot have an organizational meeting until all councillors have done what's called part A of the orientation. We currently have three ses, sessions scheduled for the twenty-third, twenty-sixth and November first, I believe. So if all of our councillors can get to the first and or second session, then the twenty-eighth would be on the table. And then we have to get them to part B before we're supposed to be able to have a council meeting, but I'm trying. I'm likely to get an extension on that. We're working through it. Uh, so it isn't obvious it's the twenty-eighth mayor, but I think it will be.
When you say it's, uh, part B, is that the swearing in?
No, part B is a, is a day-long curriculum for orientation.
Well, they'd be, you can't do, you can't swear in until all that's done.
Yeah, you can do it with other communities.
Where else do we have to combine? We might have to do.
But we're combining with McGrath and the county. We're doing it all here.
Yeah.
So the village is gonna be coming to them?
I, I don't know. That's up to Murray. We just worked with him, so maybe they are. I don't know.
Okay, um.
Okay, well, keep us posted.
Okay, the Festival Lights have sent out an invitation to enter some floats in the parade, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Is that? The, uh, uh, Carson Historical Society, um, is having another murder mystery dinner fundraiser.
And if, if I can.
Yep.
Interject, this is their main.
Yeah.
Fundraiser, so please come out and support it. It's a fun night, meal's not too bad, the three days I've done it. Participated in it and, um, you know, try and spread the word.
Random question about this, why, why will the tax receipt only be half of the buy-in?
I don't know. I saw that and I.
No, that's very common, because you have to account for the meal they ate. They don't, for that portion, so. Like Heather's done some of these and that.
Never, I just wondered that. I saw that.
Yeah, the meal cannot be counted in taxes.
For political parties, when you do those and have a dinner, it's always fifty percent.
Yeah.
Okay, the, uh, Carson County.
Go ahead and talk to that.
Yes, um, I think, I don't know if they're asking for a letter of support, but I think we should give them one. If we're not aware, more aware, we're gonna have them right there in Lee Creek before we're finished.
I agree.
Moving this way.
For sure.
This could get long, eight miles. So three years ago, we had a grizzly bear in our backyard on the hill.
I recommend to council that we direct administration. To write a letter of support and address it to the same parties that they did. And that we're aware of the problem and we agreed, we agreed that something needs to be done.
We'll send you pictures.
Yeah, send, not the cute one, send the other three.
Okay, uh, moving on to the Canadian Union of Postal Workers, this is an interesting one. Um, they are asking for support in their letter. Does anyone have any thoughts on this? Yay or nay? I don't know if we wanna get involved in that, but, uh, mayor councillor Granger.
I can't tell you what we did in a house, is we did nothing.
This, this is not a municipal government responsibility or. Yeah, and we, we had one of these. Last year, we don't get them.
Go away.
So I guess this, nothing?
Yeah.
Um, ORSC. Um, has sent a letter about, um, them potentially coming to present, is that correct?
Yeah, you want to speak that real quick? So I put this in here just because I don't believe that you need this presentation from ORSC. It's the next council that's going to. But it'd come up in this council, so I, unless you have a strong opinion otherwise, I think we should engage. ORSC to come and give an orientation to the new council, explain their services and, and justify their fees.
But give it time till the new council kinda gets.
Yeah, I mean, it'll probably end in November-ish, probably while they're doing budget.
Yeah.
You know, that, that time of year, but I wanted you to see this, cause it had been an item of conversation recently.
Councillor Burton.
So I don't remember whether we dealt with this in open session or closed session and I'm concerned to.
I think it was open.
It was open.
Was it?
Well. It wasn't an item that closed, but.
Pretty sure it was open.
I thought there was one part of it that was closed.
I don't remember.
I don't either.
I mean, when we discussed it, at the end, you said it's not much that can be changed. Except that we were trying to see if regionally we could have.
Well, yeah, you had a regional discussion and then I had suggested a very direct approach to another community.
To Curdston County.
Okay, so it's on the table, so, okay, so did you talk to them?
No, I haven't yet. Murray's away until next Monday.
That would be a discussion though.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that we do that, like we talked about before, even.
Before?
Pre, pre-talking about this.
Right.
Cause I, you know, if there's no interest, then we're left with making the decision, okay, what do we have to offer?
Right. But all what I told you is.
The county's looking at this issue right now.
Yeah.
So just.
Yeah.
From talking to them, so.
I mean.
Wherever, wherever it leads the next council, but I think we'd be prudent to do that.
Oh, what I said last time I reported that the four mayor were together and there was no appetite to change.
So that's why we pivoted to the county.
No appetite for change.
Just real quick, it's six, one, two, three days since the.
Wow.
Oh.
Wow.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to the Canadian Union of Postal Workers, this is an interesting one. Um, they are asking for support in their letter. Does anyone have any thoughts on this? Yay or nay? I don't know if we wanna get involved in that, but, uh, mayor councillor Granger.
I can't tell you what we did in a house, is we did nothing.
This, this is not a municipal government responsibility or. Yeah, and we, we had one of these. Last year, we don't get them.
Go away.
So I guess this, nothing?
Yeah.
Um, ORSC. Um, has sent a letter about, um, them potentially coming to present, is that correct?
Yeah, you want to speak that real quick? So I put this in here just because I don't believe that you need this presentation from ORSC. It's the next council that's going to. But it'd come up in this council, so I, unless you have a strong opinion otherwise, I think we should engage. ORSC to come and give an orientation to the new council, explain their services and, and justify their fees.
But give it time till the new council kinda gets.
Yeah, I mean, it'll probably end in November-ish, probably, while they're doing budget.
Yeah.
You know, that, that time of year, but I wanted you to see this, cause it had been an item of conversation recently.
Councillor Burton.
So I don't remember whether we dealt with this in open session or closed session and I'm concerned to.
I think it was open.
It was open.
Was it?
Well. It wasn't an item that closed, but.
Pretty sure it was open.
I thought there was one part of it that was closed.
I don't remember.
I don't either.
I mean, when we discussed it, at the end, you said it's not much that can be changed. Except that we were trying to see if regionally we could have.
Well, yeah, you had a regional discussion and then I had suggested a very direct approach to another community.
To Curdston County.
Okay, so it's on the table, so, okay, so did you talk to them?
No, I haven't yet. Murray's away until next Monday.
That would be a discussion though.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that we do that, like we talked about before, even.
Before?
Pre, pre-talking about this.
Right.
Cause I, you know, if there's no interest, then we're left with making the decision, okay, what do we have to offer?
Right. But all what I told you is.
The county's looking at this issue right now.
Yeah.
So just.
Yeah.
From talking to them, so.
I mean.
Wherever, wherever it leads the next council, but I think we'd be prudent to do that.
Oh, what I said last time I reported that the four mayor were together and there was no appetite to change.
So that's why we pivoted to the county.
No appetite for change.
Just real quick, it's six, one, two, three days since the.
Wow.
Oh.
Wow.
I'm not gonna lie, we saw my.
Well, in that case.
It's okay.
We have to keep getting your attention to get Jeff, Jeff.
Okay.
Last item here, not last item of the meeting, but uh C A O report is there for your reading. And that will end our public portion of our last committee of the whole meeting.
Your last time in the chair, can I say?
Forever. Uh, I'll take a motion to go into closed session, councillor Jensen.
Make a motion to go into closed session.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you Gallery for being here.
Motion to come out of uh call session?
On favor. One more motion.
You make motion to adjourn.
Jeff, do you need a motion on your contract?
Oh wait, do we need a?
Ne- next meeting.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Last meeting, yeah.
On favor.
I gotta bring my cable.
You need three blue jays.
Minutes man.
You okay?
Yeah. Yeah, I used to do that.